So he's opposing something somewhere that you're involved with?
So I've been involved with the meeting in a big matter for years in that term. There was a big bottleneck and things that were likely to be reached.
That's what I'm watching.
And other companies in the single family business, which is a government, they've been trying to get these steps. And he's been involved in an old settlement complaint. And he writes to the attorney, he says, oh, can you please send me the settlement before you made the exhibit because I never received one.
This is special.
I'm like, dude, let me show you the email where it was sent to you. Let me show you the file report that you had. Let me show you that the emails that I sent you, public notice, and you never showed up.
So he's even with his wife and I say, oh my God, you know, you dragged that thing out way too long. Way too long. Nine meetings for the Manhattan. And he goes to check there. He's like, oh, I said, I know it's your job. Everybody ready?
I don't hold against that. But that's what you're using me against.
Well, I told him last night, I said, I've never had anything against you. Because you were actually very nice to me through the entire process. Of course I was. That was part of it.
I was actually on his side. You know, I very openly.
Yeah. I know that.
He was so annoying.
Oh, he's totally annoying.
Please stand for a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the republic which is one nation under God, indivisible, and just as all the people in this world. Here are my little buddies that came up the elevator, but it was fine. Good evening, everybody. This meeting is now called to order. The Bureau of Seabright in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act has provided adequate notice of the time, date, and location of this meeting to the Esberry Park Press and the Link News on January 13th, '22. Filed notice with the Borough Clerk, posted notice on the Borough Office and the Borough Website. Welcome, everybody. Meeting's open to the public. Okay, could we roll call, please?
Councilman Bieber.
Here.
Ms. Bills. Mr. Cashmore.
Here.
Chairman Cunningham.
Here.
Vice Chairman DeSao.
Here.
Ms. Gorman.
Here.
Mayor Kelly.
Mr. Lawrence.
Here.
Mr. Lexstein.
Mr. Schwartz.
Mr. Giulio.
Here.
Welcome back, Elizabeth. I saw you were sworn in earlier. Onto the minutes from 111. Discussion or motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes at this point. A second.
Roll call, please.
Okay. Let's see who's down. Mr. Cashmore?
Yes.
Chairman Cunningham?
Yes.
Vice Chairman DeSao?
Yes.
Ms. Gorman?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Onto Mountain View Villas. This is an extension, isn't it?
This was the second extension granted because they're still seeking permit compliance.
Right, and it was approved last meeting. Onto the resolution. Anybody have discussion or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Roll call, please.
All righty. Councilman Bieber?
Yes.
Mr. Cashmore?
Yes.
Chairman Cunningham?
Yes.
Vice Chairman DeSao?
Yes.
Ms. Gorman?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Thank you. Onto new application this evening. Christopher Jerry, 15 Church Street.
I have to step down, please.
You're within 200 feet? Thank you.
If I need to leave here and go on the line.
I would appreciate if you did, thank you. We'll pull you back in at the appropriate time.
Yes, sir. Welcome.
So let the record reflect, please, that we have reviewed the notice, public notice is being appropriated, the board canics and jurisdiction, and for the board's application. Although the application was submitted by applicant's attorney, Kevin Kennedy, Mr. Kennedy did call me today to advise me that he would not be appearing tonight, that the applicant felt that he could represent himself. So I just want to let you know if at any time that you feel uncomfortable or that you feel you can't proceed and present for yourself, you know, just please let us know and we can discuss adjourning it so you can obtain your counsel, okay?
Okay, great.
Then let the record show that Heather has stepped down. She's within the 200-foot list. Go ahead, sir. Thank you.
All right, so my name is Chris Jerry and I'm the applicant. My life, we shall honor the current owners of 15 Church Street here in Seabright, our primary residence. We own the home since August of 2019. Quick backstory on the house. We bought the house and did a Phase 1 renovation of the interior of the home, got it all necessary permits, completed that. We're in Phase 2 right now. Phase 2 of the renovation involves lifting the home to be able to put a garage underneath it. With the shortage of parking in Seabright, we thought it would be a great idea to be able to take some cars off the street, put them under the house. And as Phase 2 of our renovation, we also updated our back deck. And on the front of the house, prior to the lift, there was an existing staircase that was three-by-three scoop with a stair that ran down the whole front of the house. With the renovation, we've taken that staircase and scooped down. Since we have a narrow stair, there's no need for the staircase. But we just wanted to replace that with a three-foot by 20-foot terrace across the front of the home. The proposed terrace won't take up any more space than the staircase did. It's in the same footprint. It does not take away the sidewalk space. That wasn't fair, you know, any more than before. We think aesthetically it would look very nice on the street and in line with a lot of the houses in Seabright. Same materials, the white classic, the trex deck, the white clad posts. The proposed balcony will be able to fit maybe two or three people on it, my wife and I, watch the sunset, our dog. There will be no colors on it. There will be no turned into living space or anything like that. Post will be exactly where the postwork from the staircase. And again, three foot out, just like it was before, the same amount of sidewalk and end gap front. Again, in line with the rest of the neighborhood. I brought plenty of pictures. If anybody wants to see them, not only of the home prior, but during renovation, and also some sample, an example of homes in town that may have something similar to what I have. This proposed balcony should not affect anybody's view or walkability or anything like that. And it's totally in line with 90% of the houses in Seabright in town.
The stairs are gone, correct?
The stairs are gone. As is the porch. My neighbors on either side of me still have the staircase up to the zero property line with the scoop. So not come out any further than theirs. Again, it's very small, very compact, and aesthetically will completely look like the front of the house. I can bring pictures up, do you care to see them?
So anything that you have that you'd like to submit to the board, we would, I just, yeah.
We have to keep.
We have to keep them, and that's fine. So I would suggest that you do submit them. But if you can just tell me how many you have, and then, did you take the pictures yourself?
I did.
Okay. So how many pictures do you have?
I have six pictures.
Okay. So Candace, we're going to mark them Exhibit A 1 through 6? Okay. So you can hand them over to Mr. Giulio over there, he can explain them around. You only have one copy, correct?
I have two copies of them. I'm just making sure that they're.
Okay, so we're going to keep one of the two.
Number one.
As I say, it will start on each end, be exactly. Do you want to start on that, I guess? Mr. Hoder, you want to see it?
Just real quick. I have the pictures from here. I can look at the steam.
We have this picture that people have made it. And it has your neighbor on the left has a little, is that what you're, is that the same kind of thing you're proposing?
Yeah, because that's the scoop that turns into the stairway. So that's a reverse of that.
Okay, wait a second, wait a second. For purposes of the record, all right, wait, Mr. Giulio, Liz. Time out. You're asking, you're asking the applicant questions and we have to get them on the record. So first, I need you to identify what you're looking at and what page you're looking at.
I'm looking at this map that we have, or.
Okay, so those are the, so you're looking at the plans?
Right.
And you're showing the applicant the picture that's on the first page of the plan? Okay, so what, you could sit down. So what is your question to?
Oh, I just wanted to know if it was, would be similar to the one on the left.
Okay, so is, is.
Well, what is the left, the mirror image of the old staircase? And I think there's some better representation in some of those pictures.
In the photos, okay.
Yeah.
Sorry.
And the question I have is what would be the main entrance to the house now?
So the main entrance, there'll be several. We have an interior staircase plus we have an entrance around the back. We have a lower level entrance plus an entrance to my deck level. So, you know, it could be anyone.
And the garage will be right at the end. How can you pick the garage?
Be good.
Have you decided on the railing type?
Yeah, it's going to be the way you've done on the plastic railing. Very in line with everybody on the street has. And the trex will be the trex deck. Also may add, I was making too much, but the post will be, I want to clasp in that, you know, that pre-staffed plate, so it looks nice. So it's important for us that it looks nice instead of for the main.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Looks like he needs two variances, one for front setback, where he's doing zero, where what, 25 is required, and side setback, which is not enumerated on the, on the plans. Mr. Kennedy made a comment about it. I'm sure it's.
Yeah, he wasn't sure.
Are you weren't sure that, you know, the measurement from the property line at the.
Hey, Steve, excuse me.
I'm sorry. The measurement from the property line, if you're looking at the house to the right, is three feet from the marker, and from the other side is two foot 10, I think. And that would be right where the existing post, the post that we removed from the scoop. So that's where the scoop was prior to maybe removing it. Does that make sense?
Maybe I can help. I'm Dave Hoder, I'm an engineer.
Oh, I do.
So he has a ripstop and survey here, and the side setbacks today on the house are 2.7 on the west side, you know, on the east side, and then 0.6 on the other side. So it looks like he's going to do that with the same setbacks as the house for this step. That's what he wants to do. So the three feet is required, he's going to have 0.6 and 2.7.
That sounds about right.
So it's going to, the front setback's not going to change really because of where the old steps were, but the side setback will change a little bit because he's going to go from edge to edge of the existing house, as opposed to slightly less on both sides.
And I could go slightly less on both sides if that's what I need to do.
Say that again?
I could go slightly less on both sides. I mean, we're talking on one side a half inch approximately on the 2.7 side.
No, the, I mean, I can't tell really, but your survey shows on one side, it shows the deck or the existing stair in pretty far. Maybe four feet?
Three feet?
There's a picture on the front of your plan.
Yeah, no, that was, that's what it was before.
Before, right. But your, your plan showed going to the edge of the building, which would mimic what the building is, which is 2.7 and 0.6.
Okay.
Your supporting posts, if you brought them in, would interfere with your swing into your garage and your exit from your doors? I don't know if you want to do that.
I know, I agree. You want them on the edge.
Yeah, we want them to the outside edge.
Any questions from the witness, board members?
I guess I have one question. Dave, the original stair, that was per code of variance of when Christopher Jerry bringing it out to the Seabright.
Yeah, it was not per code. It would have required a variance if he was going to rebuild that stair today, because it went out to zero setback. But all the houses are pretty much along that line.
Right.
On the, in that street, so.
Right. Yeah, I took a look at it myself, and it's, without the stair there, it almost seems like the post is going to be pretty far out. And I know you said three feet in the plans, I think you may show 2.1 actually in the actual detailed parts. The concern I would have is, is it a risk, is it a safety risk, somebody walking into it, because it is pretty far onto the sidewalk. When I look left and right of your house, the other property pretty much came out to New York proposing. So if they were done legally and per code of variance or whatever, then I think you're trying to just replace what you've had before from a projection perspective. But if it's not, if it wasn't done, I don't know whether or not that Neil Kessner can work for the purpose of this review.
If it wasn't what?
The original stair, Christopher Jerry's proposal, they go out with his post to the same distance projection from the house as the original stair.
Right.
Actually, it's a little less, if you look at the plot plan, look, you have your plot plan in front of you, you can see the existing stairs, they're a few inches in front of where the deck is going to be. I think he's lessening the distance moving in toward the curb, if you look at the plan.
Yeah.
So it's, I don't think he's going any worse than the condition.
Yeah, that's my point. If what was, if it's grandfathered because of what was there.
Yeah.
Then it's consistent from a projection perspective. Especially when people had to raise their.
Still requires a variance.
Yes.
Anyone else?
No, I don't have a concern with it being the same width as the house, except for the support standpoint, you can run off, keep it the same width, it won't be anything. By making it more narrow, it's really how far it comes into the sidewalk is the discussion, not the left to right, is it?
I'm sorry?
The left, you consider the left to right a big concern, or?
No, not really, because it's the same, no, because it's the same as the house. The house is there. It's a large building, it's a building that goes from side to side, and this is just going to project out from that same side to side.
If it's a really, you didn't raise the house yet, did you?
I did.
Oh, you did?
No, then you changed it in the pictures.
He can't, he can't, he doesn't have it, so he's done.
There were pictures of both the raised house and the previous that wasn't raised with the stairs going past everybody. It's a good comparison.
If I'm going to state, there's one photo of it that looks very close to what you're proposing.
That's exactly right.
Right, that one photo is probably the most illustrative to me of what it's going to look like ultimately. It's the photo that has the elevated deck.
No, the one, the existing one.
No.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes, that one.
Yeah, this one.
Except you're going to put AZAC around the poster.
Correct.
So in this one picture, there's a, I'm assuming this is, this is your house, everything's garage, no deck. This house next to you, those are the stairs, the blue stairs going up?
Correct.
So your projection above is going to be in line with, proposed to be in line with those blue steps?
I'm not sure if that's 100% true, that it's going to be out from that, but it's hard, we don't know, we don't have a survey on that, so we really don't know. So it's really not a fair question for you.
If, no further questions from the board, we're open to the public. Is there anyone in the public that has a question about the testimony?
Can I come out and read one of your?
Yes, you can.
Okay.
Please.
Wait, she's not, she's doing a comment, she has to do a question first.
Oh, actually.
Ma'am.
Chris, we're talking about the testimony right now. If you have a statement, you'll have to read it in the public portion.
Okay, well, I do have a question there.
Definitely.
Okay.
Well, this, um.
Wait a second, I'm sorry.
My name is Krista Oxy, I'm Church Street, Seabright.
Can you spell your last name for me, please?
D-O-X-E-Y. Just say, I swear.
She's swearing, give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Yeah.
I swear.
You swear, that's fine, thank you. So clear, firm, fine, thank you.
I swear. Um, this was a three-foot by three-foot platform that led into the sunroom on this, on this house. They have incorporated the sunroom into the home itself. Therefore, therefore, the increase would be square footage inside the house. Now, considering that, that was a sun porch, and it was used nine months out of the year. It wasn't used in a severe winter. It contained furniture, TVs, and the previous.
Ms. Oxy, I'm going to interrupt you for a minute, because everything you're putting on the record was not what the gentleman testified to. So right now, it's questions, questions on his testimony, but you're more than welcome to come up in the next portion and give comments, okay?
I do have a question.
Okay.
That nine-by-13 balcony deck platform, whatever, is that going to hang over the sidewalk?
No, it's not going to hang over the sidewalk, Chris, any more than my, my steps in my suit. It's the same foot, the same angle, the same thing.
But it's going to be much bigger?
No, well, it's going to be three feet wide, proposed a three feet wide, 20 feet long.
So you're going from a three foot by three foot to a nine by 20?
Three foot.
Three foot.
Three foot, it's, yeah, no nine, just three. So it's going to, it's proposed as a sitting, a sitting deck.
I understand, Chris, you know, the, the three foot by three foot was when you got to the top of the stairs.
Right.
So, and then we just wanted to go all the way across so we can continue to have that. A lot of times you just sit out there and kind of hang out up there, you know, and all this stuff. So we're kind of looking to continue that, and as small as possible.
But I guess my point is, if you, if you had a porch in place to see out and sit, why would you need a load?
No, I don't think you've been in a house since I've done it. That porch is not, it's not a porch. It's, when we got all the permits and everything, we did the Phase 1 of the renovation, that three-season room was made part of the living.
Living, that's what I said.
Living space.
Yes, it is.
You did say that. And, and so we're just looking to put the balcony outside. So that, that, I don't know if I answered your question or.
It really doesn't, so I'll make a statement at the end, okay?
Thank you. Anyone else in the public have a question about the testimony?
Hi, Erin Keating, I live at Church Street on the east side of West Point. What is happening?
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
So for the side yard setback, I just am wondering more about a regulation in town, is that would it have to follow the existing footprint of the deck, or how much more is allowed for it to bump out versus what the existing footprint of, because to the point of, right, it's flush to the side of the house, so the existing deck is expanding. So I guess my question is, one, not knowing what the exact setback is that they're asking for, is what is, what is that now, based on where that new deck is built? Right now, it's flush to the, you know, it's built to the side of the house, so I'm wondering what that is within the variance that was allowed or wasn't allowed.
What's the setback, is what you're asking?
Yeah, I mean, again, the deck now, I mean, has been built to be flush with the, with the side of the house, and I'm wondering what that is.
Right, do you know what the setback is of the house? Before you get a plan, it's, you're not going to extend any further than the, the house itself now, as it exists.
And that's within the allotted amount, or is that?
Well, he has a previous area.
It was never, it was never to the allotted amount. The allotted amount, well, the side yards are three feet. Is that what you found about the sides?
Yeah, I'm saying, the previous deck was actually not flush to the side of the house.
You're, you're missing, you're missing the front of the house.
No, I'm talking about the back. Or I guess technically it's the side yard to the back side of my, my yard.
That isn't the application.
Yeah, that's not part of the application. This is simply for the deck on the front, so I'm a little confused.
So I guess, what is this side yard that's stated in the letter that was issued, what is that in reference to?
The application is only for the deck in the front of the house, has nothing to do with anything else on the.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I was just talking about how far in the, the poster or anything would be in the front and side.
Okay.
Yeah, the back deck.
Sorry, that's, I just, I said side yard, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, so we're talking about the projections in the front of the house, we're talking about where the support, support dues are located from the property line, that constitutes a setback on the sides. So it sounds a little weird, but it's really the front deck.
Yeah. And then the other question I had as it pertains to the front of the house, this is the answer, is there was an existing porch that was there, again, that was an enclosed porch, but was not part of the existing structure before, so how does, how does that get managed when that turns into, again, part of the permanent structure, and then now we're asking to add another porch up? I guess I'm more wondering from us as a resident, that I can close in my front porch, extend out the same way, and that's part of this discussion?
So, the, the enclosure of the front porch didn't require a variance, it was subsumed in the construction of the house, so that's why he is coming here now requesting relief from the ordinance, which is what a, typically what a zoning board does. So he's requesting relief to install this, so.
End of session. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else question? If not, public portion's closed. We will reopen for statements in a minute. Do you have any additional testimony?
Not really, I mean, again, we're trying to do this as, as kind of small, the same foot foots possible, aesthetically pleasing as possible, and in line with the way the town looks, and to make that part of the street look nice. I mean, we're doing all this to improve the property, and we've been doing that since we purchased it, and I think that, I think that we've done that, and we just want to make it as nice as we can.
Okay. Board members, anything else?
I have a private question. Did you require many variances when you raised the house, did that original?
Right, this is actually the second time this house has been raised, so it was a fairly simple raising, I did not have any variances on that.
So absorbing that front porch in to your living room is not subject to variance approval or.
No.
The living form approval.
No, I mean, I have all the necessary permits based on the plan that I presented, and, you know, putting in the power amps and the beams and everything to, to, you know, bring the wall down and include that in, so it was all permitted correctly.
And there weren't any variances required at that time?
If, if nothing else from the board, why don't we open to the public? Seems like Ms. Oxy has a statement.
And Ms. Oxy, you're still in the row. I just think that when this house was renovated, the owner, as I said before, decided to,
the town looks, and to make that part of the street look nice. I mean, we're, we're doing all this to improve the property, and we've been doing that since we purchased it, and I think that, um, I think that we've done that, and we, we just want to make it as nice as we can.
Okay. Board members, anything else?
I have a private question. Did you require many variances when you raised the house, or did that original...
We're, we're, this is actually the second time this house has been raised, so it was a fairly simple raise, and I did not have any variances on that.
So absorbing that front porch in to the, your living room is not subject to variance approval, or...
No.
The living form approval?
No, I mean, I, I have all the necessary permits, based on the plan that I presented, and, you know, putting in the power amps and the beams and everything to, to, you know, bring the wall down and include that in, so it was all permitted correctly.
And there weren't any variances required at that time?
Not, sir.
If, if nothing else from the board, why don't we open to the public? Seems like Ms. Doxy has a statement.
Okay. Sit next to my neighbor.
And Ms. Doxy, you're still under oath.
Okay. I just think that when this house was renovated, the owner, as I said before, decided to, to incorporate the original deck, sunroom, into his living space, so that porch is the original porch, because it's a merger, the construction merger. The three foot by three foot square original platform mentioned in Mr. Kennedy's notes has been removed, right? And now the owner seeks a variance, so he may install three by twenty across the front of the house. If granted, the balcony would look out of place and set a precedence for other neighborhood residents to build out. Church Street is comprised of older homes, many of them original, who kept their porches when they raised their houses after Sandy. They rebuilt within the footprints and setbacks. Church Street also has three beautiful new houses, again, the balconies conform to the setbacks. One house on the street, right across the street from fifteen, Church Street, elected to eliminate their existing porch when they raised, and they made that one to a debt, but still within the confines and within the setbacks. On Church Street, the houses are very, very close together. In some cases, they're handshaken, close together, you can reach over and shake their neighbors' hands. It has become more dense with the addition of the larger, beautiful houses, but Church Street will become even more dense and crowded with the first construction of homes and condos across the foot of our street. I strongly object to the granting of these two variances, now, now it's one maybe? Two variances, Mr. Cashman?
There's two, two variances.
Two, two variances, okay.
Front setback and side setback.
Okay, all right. But one of them is my neighbor, correct?
Uh, well, it's three versus two point seven, so it's not very good.
I strongly object to the granting of two, of these two variances, and ask the board not to grant this request. I believe that one of the criteria considered when granting a variance is whether or not the request conforms to the surrounding area and neighborhood. I do not believe that this conforms, and as previously said, will set a precedence for other Church Street residents, who could also apply for this type of variance if they so desire. Please remember that the applicant had a porch originally, which was in compliance with the setbacks and keeping within the construct of the neighborhood. This application should no way be accepted. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
My name is Drew Miller, I live on Church Street.
What, what address?
Uh, sixteen. First of all...
One sec.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
We're going to tell the truth and nothing but the truth of the purpose of the application. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
I respect my neighbor, Chris Doxy, very much, but I disagree with her 100%. First of all, I think it's incredible, uh, what we've done post-Sandy, to continue to beautify our exceptional town, and I think that we're looking at it unfold right before our eyes. Whatever we dreamed of after Sandy is coming true. And part of that is to continue to beautify, update, upgrade our homes. Mr. Jerry has done that from his commitment to purchase the house, and he's continually, continually beautifying his home with this application for variance. It's not encroaching any more than what was originally there, and if you go down our street, you can see that it's constantly, uh, being upgraded as far as the value of our homes. Right next door to me, my neighbor across the street is building a very large project that is absolutely gorgeous and beautiful. I live right next door to him. The home that he's putting there is incredible compared to what was there before. Right down the street from me is another neighbor, who's doing a very big project, basically raising his home, gutting it, and recreating something for his family. That's what we do, that's what we're doing. Um, at the same time, Mr. Jerry is having a very small and very modest project that's only going to beautify his home and add more value. Our street is constantly being upgraded as far as the value of our properties, and as a neighbor, I don't have any objection to what Mr. Jerry is working to do. And I would never, ever want to stop any of my neighbors with plans that they have, as long as they conform and that the council agrees, and I think that the council should see that the enormity of some of the projects that's going on in Seabright, especially downtown, compared to the size of Mr. Jerry's value addition, is, looks like it's going to, you know, really help out our street, really blend in and hopefully...
Thank you. Anyone else, yes, very much.
So as I mentioned, I live directly on the east side of the property, so where the stairwell question is changing, from sitting a high column porch when I'm looking to the right, was at the bottom of the stairs. So as I plan to think about this structure now coming across the length of the house, being put on a post that's flush with the side of the house, is that it will create an obstruction that we were not subjected to prior to this. I'm all about and supportive of rebuilding our town, but building it within the confines of what the rules and regulations allow for. And, you know, I would be open to it if they're talking about putting another stairwell there as a means of an entry into the house that it didn't once have, but there was in fact a porch there, and we all have choices to enclose them or not permanently, and if there was a desire to have outdoor space, then that should have been inverted back to an outdoor space. I think that we're opening up the doors to individuals such as myself or others on the street who have a very similar layout, to now closing and creating more finished living space, and then extending out decks that are, again, within the three feet of the, the small stoop that are there, and extending them across the footprint of our house. Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, public portion is now closed. Board members, discussion?
I don't think he's encroaching any more than he did before, I think he's actually being able to reduce a little. He put in a garage that takes off-street parking, he has no ability to put a staircase back outside. That deck, I don't think it's going to encroach on any more than he already had in the past.
Anyone else?
My primary concern, as I said before, was encroachment on the sidewalk, and in light of the fact that the post is going to be no further out than the present work of the existing step, I'm less concerned. When I look at this picture, I think the red one would be somewhat similar to this, so I think it creates a bit of a common sidewalk. I appreciate and understand the concern that was just addressed, but the fact that it isn't projected further out elevate most of my concerns.
Anyone else?
I, I understand the neighbor's concerns, you know, it, it's tough to look down the street. There are decks that, that do come up past the front of the houses, I understand, or the, directly to the east, uh, doesn't have their, no, actually, the porch isn't closed, you can't talk through the, the survey, the survey, it doesn't stick out quite as far. But again, as, as, as you look down the street, these decks are not untypical for the homes there, either are you for the porch, so I, I don't see where it's a neighbor detriment to the aesthetic of the street. There's actually quite a few decks that I, we'll do pictures. Yeah, I don't, I understand the neighbor's concerns, but I, I don't know that I see it as a detriment, it looks more as though it's in keeping with the, with the landscape as you do it down Church Street.
Thank you. It does look in line with the other, other decks. This is a double deck right next to it.
And the staircase protruding out further than that.
Yeah.
To me, it seems to fit in character with what else has been down on the street. Again, replacing what was a stair outside staircase, which is improved by moving that to interior space, seems to me that it's fairly reasonable and request.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the application.
Second?
I'll second.
We have a roll call, please?
We have Councilman Bieber.
Yes.
And Mr. Cashmore.
Yes.
Chairman Cunningham.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman Sale.
Yes.
Ms., well, no, it's for Qs. Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
And that's it.
Rest of luck. You want the second set of pictures, thanks?
If, if you have any.
Okay, moving along to Michael and Vicky Taitman, Taitelman, excuse me. What's that?
Just announced.
Okay, let the record show that Heather has rejoined us, Heather Gorman. And moving on to, I don't know how to say it, Taitelman, Taitelman, Tittleman, Six Willow Way.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Rick Roskey, on behalf of the applicant, Michael and Vicky Taitelman. The application before you this evening, as the chair indicated, pertains to the property located at Six Willow Way. This is your R2 zone, it's an existing, approximately 1,050 square foot residential structure. And the proposal is to raise RAC, that existing home, and construct a new home in its place.
And Mr. Roskey, before you continue, I'm just going to note for purposes of the record that we have received your notice, your certifications, saying it is deemed appropriate, so the board can accept jurisdiction, so you can finish your lovely dissertation.
Thank you. Thank you. And, and as I said, we're, we're looking to remove the existing structure and replace it with a new structure. The Taitel, the Taitelmans are planning to relocate to Seabright. They've used it far time, their, their kids have used it, great kids, and now they're getting a little selfish, and they're coming back home and taking the house back. And so, but leaving some room for these kids and grandkids. In any event, there are a couple of variances that are associated with the application. There is a, a front setback variance, which, which the architect will get into, but actually the front setback proposed is, is setback further than the existing home, which comes to about, which adds about a twelve foot front setback with respect to the existing porch. The proposed home will be at sixteen, about 16.9 feet, which is in line as, as the architect will go through, and consistent with the setbacks of other existing homes. There is also a proposed height variance, obviously the house is going to be built in compliance with capital flood rates, and, and there is a, there is a height variance associated with the application. The proposed height is at 39 feet, where 38 is permitted, and also that its top level is considered a third story, and that's opposed to a half story by virtue of the definition. And Tony, the architect will go through that as well. The, I'm sure you, you, you've seen the house, you've seen the location there. What this application will do as well is remove a couple of existing non-conformities, both with respect to side setback and with respect to the rear setback. So those will be brought into conformity by virtue of the new proposed construction. And I think that's pretty much sets it up. Unless the board has any questions, what I'd like to do is have Mr. Condoris step forward. I have Mr. Taitelman here as well, but if, Tony, if you can come up and get sworn, we can go through your testimony as well.
Mr. Condoris, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth of the purpose of the application, sir?
I do.
Thank you. State your credentials for the board.
Licensed architect to save New Jersey since 1996, I testified on this board, and many others.
Mr. Condoris has been before this board many times.
I'm just giving you the opportunity. That was all but a wonder.
Without any objection from the board, we'll accept his credentials.
Okay, Tony, if you would, I guess, should we mark Monica?
Is there any differential from this?
There is, yeah. Not this one, but the next, yeah, there's, there's a page in the back, and I have a couple of...
Then we're going to mark it, okay, so this is different than what you submitted that's on the website?
It's additional to, yeah.
Additional to, okay, so let's, can you just tell us what's additional to?
This would be, I'll call this a height, height diagram, I guess, or height comparison.
Exhibit A, height comparison diagram, does that work?
Yep.
And what, what, is it dated?
Uh, it's dated, um, October fifth, 2021.
Was it revised on any, at any time?
No, this is a brand, uh, this, this is just aside, no, it's not...
Okay.
So this is A1?
That's A1 exhibit, actually, so, we don't really, are you referring to anything else in this particular set, because the remainder of the plans are...
Are the same that you have, yeah.
All right, anyway.
But you're supposing the flat roof, that's just a comparison.
Yeah, this is, just a comparison.
Okay. I thought we had to watch it.
No, 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 no. Now, Monica, we have some, yeah, there are a couple of additional...
Yeah, it's not my terms to be marked, so let's go ahead and mark those, so...
Okay, so what's the next one?
Uh, area view showing front setbacks.
So that'll be A2.
Yeah. And then, and then two color renderings of the exterior.
So that'll be A3.
A3 and A4, just...
Oh, how many are there? Oh, there's two color, I thought they were on the same page, okay.
Yeah.
A3 and A4, which, so which is the first one?
Uh, A3 is the view from the, from the northwest, and A4 is the view from the northeast.
I don't know if we can mark this whole set, but...
That whole set, so, wait a second.
And this is A...
Hold on, hold on.
Sorry.
So, the remainder of this, of the architectural set that you're going to go through, that has been provided as part of your package online.
That is correct.
So that's why we don't have to mark this one, it's already available.
Okay. Tony, if you would, just walk the board through the site as it exists today, referring to any of the documents, any of the pictures that have been marked, and then walk the board through what's proposed as part of the application. Okay. So if you, if you go to page B1, where we show the site plan, if you look toward the east side of the property, you'll see a, a dash line, and that indicates the footprint of the existing house. And that rectangle that you see toward the front, toward Willow Way, is, is the porch, the existing porch, so this, and, and the roof of the house actually comes out over that porch. So the existing house has about a twelve foot setback off of Willow Way. Our, the proposed setback of our new house is 16.9, so we've definitely pushed the house back farther than the existing. If you look at Exhibit A2, you'll see this yellow line here, this is the property in question. So right now, the current house, which has a twelve foot setback, is in line with, pretty much with all the neighbors on that one side of the street. So the new house is actually going to be a little bit farther back than everybody else, so we're actually going to, we'll be behind the average setback on the street.
Anthony, maybe you should clarify this zoning data you have in here.
Sure, yes, there is, there is a typo on the zoning chart, thank you. Um, yeah, it's saying that the exist, our zoning chart says that the existing front setback is 20.5, that's actually the proposal, that's, that's not true, it's the...
It's, the survey showed it incorrectly, that's what you took it off of, it looks like, the original survey. It shows the line going here, but it actually goes to the house.
It goes to the house on the porch, right, it doesn't enter to the porch.
So, so the actual setback you said is twelve something now?
Yeah, yes.
So we have to change that?
Right, yeah.
Twelve, twelve is accurate?
Uh, no, it's, it's like, it's, it's like 11.9 or 12.1.
Well, she's got to put it in the records.
Okay, hold on.
We'll help.
Well, it's not on the survey, so all I can do is...
You can't see the survey, sir.
Yeah, it's, it's more like 10.9, I'd say so. 10.9.
Well, 10.9.
Is existing.
So actually, to point it out to the, to the board, he's actually increasing the setback, before it looked like he was decreasing.
Yes, that was a significant typo.
Yeah, that, that put... Yeah, that caught my eye immediately.
Yeah, we went through that earlier, so yeah, we're proposing 16.9, we're 10.9. Okay, and then, Tony, go into the, oh, Anthony, I had referenced earlier, the existing non-conformities, right? Yes, so the, yeah, you can see on the same diagram, the existing house sort of encroaches both on the rear and east side setbacks, west side setbacks. Okay. And all existing conditions are set for correctly in your zoning box in terms of the existing. So that's the existing rear. Yes. Okay. So the new house will comply for the rear and the sides, the variance that we're requesting is the front being able to come out a little bit past the front setback. And it's not the entire house, it's a portion of it, or it's, most of it is actually decked. Okay. And then let's talk about the height. Yes, the height, we're asking for a height of 39 feet, which is one feet above the west permitted, yes, and, you know, being that the house doesn't have a sloped roof, the third floor is actually, has full-height walls, so we can keep the. So the house has a relatively low pitched roof. We tried to get a little more height out of that top, so that's why we asked for that extra foot, yeah. If you look at this diagram.
Is that a good time to show that?
Sure. This is, so this is one that we marked as A. A1. This is not marked. So this is a pretty interesting diagram here, so this is our proposed house, which we're requesting a height of 39 feet. Right. This house actually, which is fake, it's an imaginary house, actually complies with 38 feet, but because of the definition of height, it's measured at the mean roof, so from the eve to the ridge, so this house gets a tremendous amount of more bulk as a compliant house rather than this one, which needs a one-foot height variance. So just to give a little illustration of.
Well done.
Now, Tony, you also had marked, I guess it was a 3D renderer that you had prepared? Yes. Actually, two, you have A3 and A4. Correct.
Let's just go through what that shows.
I don't know what happened to take this closer, all right. So yeah, this is the view from the northeast, so as you're coming down the street, that's the way you see, so again, the part of the house that's approaching into that front setback is mostly balcony. There is this one little angled section right here, which we can sort of turn the house so we can get a view of the river from there. But it's just, it's that one triangle that's actually building, the rest of it is open porch, which are a little more, more area open than a solid building. And then from the northwest side, this shows the face of that triangular section that's facing the river, and obviously we put a lot of windows there to capture the view. Okay. And then also, so we talked about the front setback, and we talked about the building height, the number of stories is also a variant. Right, so, yeah, so the definition of a half-story is typically designed to have a third floor be tucked within a roof. So when you have a half-story, you really can't have full-height walls all the way to the ends of the building, it has to be contained within an attic, basically, and maybe with some dorms, so. The reason this is a third story is because it's not contained under a roof, it has full height walls, although it's only partial, it's not covering the entire, the entirety of the building, the rest of it is balconies. Right, right. So it doesn't, so it's still within.
Can you clarify that again? I thought a third story, a half-story had to be one-third.
Yes, that too.
One-third more than the second story.
It's, yes, it's a square footage, it's about one-third. It can only, it can only be one-third. It can only be one-third, maximum.
So is that more than one-third?
It's more than one-third, so there's a.
So that's the reason for a third story?
That's correct, that's why it's considered a third.
Yeah, I don't think it has anything to do with the roofline.
Well, there's two definitions, they say that, they say that one, two of the walls have to have a maximum of two foot.
Right, you can't have a clear wall from floor to.
Correct. So in a couple cases, you do have it.
So as long as it's tucked in, it's okay.
Yeah, exactly.
I also figured you have an elevator in this area, but you don't show it, don't you have to have an extension on the top for the mechanism? I'm above the roof.
No, hydraulic elevators have the machinery, you just need an equal clearance on top.
But also, isn't there an issue not having a bedroom and a second?
No. It's really strictly square footage.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry, any other? Tony, you also had an opportunity to review Dave Porter's report dated 12/22/21. Any issues with anything raised in the report? No, the house more than complies, I don't have, we don't have the elevator specific actually, I don't come, the ground here is around five or six feet, and we're 90 yards from the ground, so we're like 15 feet. Okay, okay. And Dave had asked you that, the applicant, of course, is agreeable if during construction there's any damage to the sidewalk or anything that would be repaired.
That's correct.
There was also a question of what the final lot surface would be outside the building and the driveway, and I think the answer is grass. It'll be grass, yes, unless, other than the driveway and. Other than the driveway, it'll be a lot. And landscaping too, which hasn't been established, some sort of landscaping. Okay. Mechanical items, of course, would be moved out of the, the D out of the blood plane? Yes, they're not showing, but we have plenty of spots within the setbacks where we can put a raised platform. Okay. And everything else in the report was, yeah, that will comply? Yeah, we'll make sure of the possibility of building permits. An engineer's plan of grading everything. Dave, anything else?
Most of the comments in my letter are really notes that I want to have him put up, Tony, you put up a plan, and then re-submit for compliance, and then later on, there'll be a plot plan review, which I may do, or Evaki made it.
Okay.
And that one will have any grading or piping, that type of stuff that we need, would be for drainage.
Okay. So I could have, I'll have the notes, it's not going to be.
Yeah, and the notes on the plans, if somebody gets approved, and any information on, you know, what type of grass or driveway will be, and if you could show the, show the mechanicals somewhere on there where you can put them.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and water and sewer.
Okay.
There wasn't nothing really else.
What would you say, water and sewer, you mean hookups or?
The show line, showing me where they're coming from, like it's probably the existing water and sewer that they're going to reuse, but, you know, it's probably going to have to be cut off and then reconnected.
Yeah, but that's all usually done with the plot plan and the site plan for building applications. Get reviewed by.
The plot plan usually is the grading, grain, that kind of stuff too.
And Evaki does that at the.
Sometimes it's him, sometimes I do.
Questions for?
Yeah, any other questions for Anthony?
What's the hardship for not being required variance to the third floor?
Well, it's not a hardship, I mean, the argument would be that the benefits of putting in that third floor substantially outweigh any detriment, you know, in our view, the benefit of having that additional living space is, you know, something that the applicant desires, it kind of, it kind of, in a certain sense, drives the project, and so, and in terms of the negative impact, we don't see any negative impact because we're still at the 39 feet, and that 39 feet is, you know, not out of keeping with many of the homes that have been built in the, in and around town, and so, so we're not, so we're not opposing this, you know, monstrosity or this overly tall, excessively high structure, so we don't have any negative impact, we don't believe, and the positives are that it, you know, it increases the usability and the livability of the property, it allows the applicant to utilize the home for himself and his family, and all at the same time, increasing, improving the existing setback, front setback that exists today, and also alleviates, removes existing non-conformities that started in the side yard a year ago.
What height would you be allowed to raise the existing home?
If we raise the existing home?
Right, what do we imagine will apply? I know there's some sort of test where if you raise 40 feet.
If the house is already, I'm sorry, can I ask that? Yeah. If the house is already, if you have to raise the house to comply, and it makes the existing house go above 38, they give you like 40.
It's 42.
42 feet, I believe, that's only if there's an existing house that's too tall to do it.
Yeah.
To raise it.
I'm just saying that that can't be done, even if you're raising.
That's correct.
It could be as long as you're, if the existing home here decided you have better setbacks with this, and we don't know if it's of character, it's an existing home, but it's not inconceivable that you could end up with a greater height raising the existing home, which is complying with the flood regulations.
They could happen, yes. Yeah, that's why I was saying, it's not out of character with many of the other homes.
Any board members have a question about the testimony?
Just a quick question to my education, since there's a bedroom on the top floor, is there any issues which we go out to emergency response or fire or whatever?
That's under, that's usually under construction, if they have the option of making it 5/8 sheet rock ceilings and walls, or putting in a sprinkler system on a three-story house, that isn't part of our jurisdiction.
Okay, I'm used to the fourth floor being a rooftop deck or something, not usually bedrooms, that's why I'm asking.
No, no, if you build a three-story house, it has to meet fire code, so you have the option of the sheet rocking, double sheet rocking, or a fire sprinkler system.
Yeah, both have to comply with that. Thank you.
That's on the building, though.
Yeah.
Anyone else on the board? If not, when are we open to the public, sir? Any questions about the witness's testimony? If not, thank you. Anything else from the board? If not, is there anyone in the public that has a statement about this application? Yes, sir, please state your name for the record.
Scott Hall, I live at 556 Ocean, my one.
Mr. Hall, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth for purposes of applications, sir?
I do.
Thank you.
So we recently bought our house there, and actually went across this board recently for renovation and improvement, just as our neighborhood 552 did as well. We all honor the 2.5-story limit in our plans, so did not ask for that variance, actually did not get the height variance either. We're totally fine with the use of plots of land, we know their type and their, so variance is around the plot size, makes a lot of sense to us, but we don't think a third floor is incoming with the houses in the neighborhood, we think it actually will block views from other decks that have been built in the area there, and we just don't think it's appropriate for that neighborhood to have a building precedence at three stories. We just drove around the neighborhood this evening, there is no three-story that we could see that is approved in U shape of that area. So we really think this plan should be modified to be consistent with the board zone, with the variance rules, and make that top floor usable as an entertainment space, but sit on the 2.5-inch floor. So please ask the board to consider that.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? If not, the public portion is closed, discussion from the board?
I had a question, Mr. Condors, relating to that, can you go through the elevations on G3 plan from each floor, and I'll take a second look at it.
The elevations?
Yeah, I'm wondering if there's a place that you could save a foot or two when you wear a shoe here on the height. What is your, is the height of your vote member of the first floor of grade?
The, so in the ground, your garage, it has an agent ceiling, so we couldn't go any.
Eighty minimum, eight foot for the garage doors opening up.
That's correct, yeah. Then the next floor up, which is actually the bedroom level, because this is a reverse living, that has nine foot ceilings, and then the main, so both of the main floors are.
Mr. Natural Intelligence, drop for one second, Mr. Condors. Let's play devil's advocate for a moment, assuming that you could cut, you know, the foot off to drive it to a 38-foot versus a 39-foot to meet the height compliance, based on the square footage of the proposed top, it would still be considered a three-story house, correct?
That's correct. It would eliminate the height variance.
So eliminating a height variance is not going to change the story?
That's correct.
Okay, so I just wanted to get that out there, just because there's really.
And you showed the comparison on it, you have?
Yeah.
With the, of course, complying. So if you comply with the 38 feet, look how much higher the house would be, Steve?
No, I understand that, with the measurement of the mean height of the roof, I'm not sure why on this roof you're not doing the same thing, but I didn't ask that question before, I was looking more at the height of the floors to see if there was a way that you could get down to the 38 feet, which regardless of how many stories it is, if it's still within the 38 feet.
That's what it means, if the ceiling is up.
Or A6, I need.
One foot isn't going to make a big difference, Steve.
No, I understand, I'm having a conversation to look at options.
Are you redesigning?
I'm not redesigning, I'm looking at ways to address the, I'm sorry, I forgot to remember the first name again.
Oh, Scott.
Scott, I thought it was Scott, I didn't want to get the wrong name. I'm just having a conversation to see if we could address Scott's concerns at all.
I think, I mean, I, I'm concerned with the precedent of going from a two-and-a-half stories to three, foresee right for the future.
But a two-and-a-half story is only volume, it's still three stories. A half-story is still another four floors.
I completely hear you, I completely hear you, this is a fourth bedroom, it's multiple cars, you're having, imagine if every, Scott came over here, popped another bedroom on top, and then the next person comes in with a free bedroom comes in, I mean, this opens the door for really increasing the density, see right?
For this zone, is this pressing the setting at all?
No.
It's not?
No. Any decision you make is non-presidential.
Everybody, right, yes.
It's done on a personal basis, and just to your point, even a two-and-a-half story house that's constructed could still have additional bedrooms up on the upper floors, so it doesn't increase density. So, I mean, just by virtue of comparison, so I just wanted to point that out, so it really is, it becomes a technical differential for the height of the roofline, which is calculated under the ordinance, correct? And, and the square footage of that floor, so I think that's the, that's the point that Mr. Condors is making, this, the D3 diagram.
You know, if I might add, despite the variances, this, one could say this is a better zoning alternative, because again, if I, if I turn this house into that one, which I can, it'll be a two-and-a-half story house, and I'll beat the square footage, but the house could potentially be 40, what is that, 40, 47 feet high, so.
Yeah, we're kind of splitting hairs here, when you have two-and-a-half stories, 38 foot is permitted, and you're a third story because of the square footage being used in your 39 instead of 38, is there any reason why you're not measuring, you're measuring the top of the roof?
No.
Is there any reason why you're not measuring the mean height?
No, I am measuring, I mean, if you look at this line right here, that's the mean, it's the mean of this little, the smaller one on top.
Okay.
The height is like a lot of.
That's very nice, it is. Again, the difference between the 38 feet.
If we're in a discussion now, I think this is a great improvement.
Two-and-a-half or three is not, not major.
He's taking a house that had, didn't qualify for side yard setbacks, or rear yard setbacks, and then he's now creating it so they will, he's improving the setback in the front.
Centering it on the lot.
And a good-sized lot, centering it on the lot, and as he points out, if he did the two-and-a-half story at code, which is still accomplishing the same square footage in the house, it's going to be a much larger structure and more.
And much higher.
Much higher, by designing it the way he did now. By designing it the way he did now, he brought the whole thing down, accomplished the same thing with the square footage. I think it's a great application. It looks like to me, correct me if I'm wrong, but a fair amount of the, of the third story is open air.
That's correct, yeah.
Also, the designs that I know, Mr. Brodsky was just about to mention it, it creates a differential in the light, air, and open space.
Took the words out of my mouth.
I knew I did.
And I, I rode the loop there today too. And, and there are a fair number of newer homes that are in this style in the neighborhood. Correct me if I'm wrong.
They're going up all over the place, it's a new thing.
There are two stories. Would you remember, the several of the styles that were two stories?
2.5.
Or 2.5, they were applied with their rules.
So the heights are higher than these.
Anyone else in the public have anything? If not, any further discussion from the board or a motion? I'll make a motion to approve this application. Okay, second?
I'll second it.
Here's a roll call, please.
Yeah, Councilman Peabody?
Yes.
Mr. Cash, Tom?
Yeah.
Chairman Cunningham?
Yes.
Vice Chairman DeSalle?
Yes.
Ms. Gorman?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Julia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Have a good evening.
Don't go anywhere, Mr. Lawrence.
Yep, don't run away. Thank you all very much, Mr. Bla. Onto Mr. Brodsky again, to, moving on to discuss Beachfront Joe. I think you wanted to mention something to the board.
Yes, yes, we did, we have had a number of adjournments, and we had asked for, we had asked for one additional 1 through 28. The spaces.
Ladies and gentlemen of the public, ladies and gentlemen of the public, you've got to be quiet.
The reason for it was that we have, there's a neighbor that had objected to the original plan, immediately adjacent to the property owner, the apartment building, hardware and apartment building. We've, we've, he has an attorney, an engineer, and an architect. We've met with him, we've excited him, we've actually, pursuant to those meetings, have prepared revised plans, those which are, which are going to allow light and air into the windows, which was, which was what his concern was. We actually, we did the whole plan, sent them over to his attorney probably about a week and a half ago. That property owner, engineer, and architect are reviewing those plans and are going to get back to me. I'm hopeful that it's going to dissolve the issue. But either way, we think we, we, you know, made a major accommodation, and we're going forward with those revised plans on March 8. We anticipate the neighbor will be in line, but either way, we're going to go forward with it on March 8.
And Mr. Brodsky, pursuant to our discussion together, what happens if you don't go forward on March 8?
Sorry. March 1st.
Correct.
Yes. I'm hopeful that not only will we go forward, but it'll be a nice, friendly meeting as opposed to adversarial.
On a zero-mot line construction, you don't have to accommodate the person next door to the pool, which enough to put in the back?
That's exactly right.
That is, that is correct, but I think, Mr.
No, it's nice that he's trying to.
Well, and that's exactly what I was going to say. Mr. Brodsky and I have had in-depth discussions, and I think it's very prudent to allow for the adjournment based on the fact that he is really trying to avoid a litigation situation, which would only embroil the tenants. So I think it's a win-win for the.
It's making our building a little smaller, and, you know, my client had to digest that, but he, he wants to, but he's ultimately.
Can't get much smaller.
The lot can't get much smaller, and that's for sure.
He's been working on this for so many years, we don't feel.
Yes, he has.
He must be looking for more parking.
I'm sure you're going to hear that. Look at how long you, he has, he has.
So, Mr. Chair, we can carry this.
So we can carry this to the 8th of March.
And we will, and we will be known as.
Let the record show that it will be heard on the 8th of March.
Thank you.
Or it will be dismissed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brodsky, always lovely to see you.
Is there any other business before the board this evening? I don't hear anybody. If not, anyone else in the public would like to be heard? My friend back there? If not? I'll make a motion to adjourn. I'll second it.
She can stay.
All in favor?